And I think we're good.
We are.
Okay, thank you. I will call open session to order. I'm gonna bypass the flag salute as it's a special meeting and move. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, move by.
I'll third, Jesus.
Move, I'm gonna say move by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mrs. Wells. Sorry, Mandy, just Rochelle is just more present.
That's probably true, actually.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
I'm watching you, Judy. Moving on to business and finance, are you presenting Raphael on this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Margot and board members. So the, we have two items here. The first one here is the approval of the agreement for the administrative services with PARs for retirement incentive for eligible, certified, non-management, certified management, classified non-management, and classified management district employees. We do have today to go over what this, what this all means and kind of the process. And to look at like just the the totality of this, we have Miss Rachel Sanders here from PARs who has a presentation. And hopefully we could just go over that. So Rachel?
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board. Glad to be with you. As Raphael mentioned, my name is Rachel Sanders. I'm a consultant with PARs. So I'd be happy to share some more information on the proposed early retirement incentive. So Raphael, would you like for me to share my screen or do you prefer to share it on your end?
You can share yours. You can go at your pace.
Sounds good. All right, let me just pull up the presentation here and make sure that everyone can see it okay. Sorry, one second. Okay, can everybody see this?
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, okay. Let me put it in full screen mode. It's even clearer. All right. Um, so let me just start off before I get into the details of the proposed plan. For those that may not be familiar with PARs, I'll give a little bit of background before we get started. So PARs stands for Public Agency Retirement Services. And we actually currently work with Beverly Hills Unified School District on its OPEB Trust Plan. So you have a lot of experience in working with your team. We also ran an early retirement incentive for the district in the 2020-2021 school year and had a successful outcome that year. So we've worked with the team before and are really experts in this field of early retirement incentives. We did get our start back in 1984 with this very program that we're talking about today, the early retirement incentive. So over the decades, we have certainly fine tuned our program. And we want to make sure that when we share projected numbers with the district that we are on the side of being conservative and not giving any pie in the sky numbers. This is really our expertise and we are very thorough in our analysis. So we're located down in Orange County, right by John Wayne Airport, but we service school districts up and down the state of California. As you can see here, have over 500,000 participants that we're doing the ongoing administration for, many of which are still getting their early retirement incentive benefits. And you can see that we have about 6.5 billion in assets under administration. So this next page is just a sampling of our 300-plus districts that we've worked with in the state of California. So not only is PARs the pioneer of the early retirement incentive program, we are also the leading provider in the state. And so I know that oftentimes districts like to know which of their neighbors are in this program as well or have utilized us in the past. So you can see here some districts in Los Angeles County that have utilized the program. We've actually worked with a number of districts in LA County that are not even listed here, but but these are some just to to highlight. You can see there again that your district has also utilized PARs before. We've also worked with LAUSD and Laco. We also included some other well-known districts across the state, again, San Diego Unified, San Francisco Unified. A lot of the big districts have done this program with PARs in the past as well. So in terms of the program itself, this would be a contingent offering, meaning that if the board were to take steps to approve the opening of this plan today, that would simply be what it is, approving the window to start so that folks can start to get their information and determine whether or not they wish to enroll in the window. So our plans typically take anywhere from a 30 to 60-day enrollment window. I know for your district, there are some parameters of 30 days in mind just to keep in mind those ever-important March 15 notice dates. And so it is a bit of a shorter window, but we have done plans in that period of time before. And we're certainly prepared to meet those parameters once again here. During that 30-day window, all of the employees that are eligible for the program would be sent a customized enrollment packet by the PARs team. Now, in that packet, they will see all of the options available to them if they do decide that this is something that they want to think about, so that they can make an informed decision as to whether this incentive is enough to potentially inspire them to retire earlier than they may have otherwise planned. During that period, of course, they will also want to check with either CalSTRS or CalPERS on what their retirement looks like with their main pension system, because this is really a supplement on top of what they would be getting for their main pension. Now, at the end of that enrollment period, we take a look at everybody that's actually enrolled in the plan. And at that point in time, we rerun the numbers to share with the district what those projected savings or losses would be based on the employees who actually enrolled in the plan. Now, at that point in time, the team will bring forth to the board how the numbers did pencil out. And the board would be able to vote whether or not to move forward with this program. So again, because this is a contingent program, if the board does decide to move forward, all employees that submitted a letter of resignation as part of their enrollment would be locked into resigning or retiring at the end of the school year. If however, the board decided not to move forward with the plan, the plan would be canceled. And subsequently, all letters of resignation would be automatically rescinded. So again, we are very forthcoming in communicating with employees that they are locked in if the plan moves forward. But of course, then would have the choices to whether or not to resign if it doesn't for some reason. In terms of who would actually be eligible for this plan that is outlined on this page, this is being offered to all employee groups. It is required that all eligible employees have to have at least five years of district service and must be eligible to retire under either CalSTRS, excuse me, CalSTRS or CalPERS. So while it's not a requirement that an employee concurrently retires under STIRS and PERS, most folks will, and it is a requirement that they're at least eligible to retire under STIRS or PERS. Last but not least, as I mentioned, it is required if the plan moves forward that folks do resign from district employment at the end of the 22-23 school year, and that would be on or before June 30 of 2023. The proposed plan design is 80% of an employee's final pay. And the reason that we went with 80% is that is exactly what you did in the 2020-2021 school year. So oftentimes districts that are offering these, you know, only a couple of years apart, will look to do the same benefit that was offered before. And so that's what the district decided to do. So 80% of final pay will be the offer that is made to all eligible employees. And I will explain how that offer presents itself and the different option choices that employees have. But just so you know, this will be funded over a five-year period through Pacific Life Insurance Company. So these are going to be annuity payments that the employees will receive directly from Pacific Life, and they have full flexibility in terms of how they take their options. So in terms of the benefit options available to employees, rather than walk through this page, I'll show you an illustration of what that looks like. Here, let me make my screen a little bit bigger so it's easier to see. This is a sample benefit illustration page. So what we've done here is show you what the average certified non-management or certified management employee might expect to see based on 80% of their final pay. So for the average final pay for your certified non-management employees, it's right around $118,000. So taking 80% of that final pay amount, every employee would receive a customized benefit illustration that has 14 different ways in which they could take that payout. So option one is a straightforward, unmodified lifetime option. This one would pay out roughly $400 for the employee's lifetime. The benefit would end when he or she passes away. Option two, a joint and survivor option, which would pay out monthly for the employee's lifetime plus the lifetime of his or her one-named beneficiary. And then option three is the third of the lifetime options, which pays out for the greater of an employee's lifetime or at minimum 10 years. So it's sort of like a lifetime option with a built-in 10-year insurance. No matter what, either the employee or his or her beneficiary would be made whole on 10 years' worth of payments. Now, as you might guess, the options that tend to be the most popular are these fixed-term payment options. And really, that's just because folks tend to gravitate toward the highest dollar amount. So again, not surprisingly, option five tends to be the most commonly selected option. That is an option that pays out monthly over five years. So if your certified non-management employee in this example chose option five, he or she would receive roughly $1,587 per month for five years. Once those 60 benefit payments have been made, the benefit ends. Similarly, if someone chooses option 10, they would receive roughly $860 per month, a total of 120 benefit payments made, and then the benefit would end. Now, from the district standpoint, whether an employee chooses option one, option five, or option 10, it will cost the district 80% of final pay, the same thing regardless of which option they choose. And this really puts the flexibility in the hands of the employees to make a decision that makes the best financial sense for them. Options five through nine, you'll note or have an asterisk next to them. And that is because your employees are able to potentially roll over or tax defer any retirement benefit that's paid out under 10 years. So there are some additional tax advantages that folks could think about when they're making the selection on the option. So again, a lot of good flexibility when it comes to how employees can actually take this benefit. We did the same exercise for your classified group. I won't run through these numbers for the sake of time. But of course, you can see here what those potential payouts would look like for the other employee groups as well. And getting into our analysis, as I mentioned, PARs is very thorough in running the analyses prior to recommending whether or not a district might want to consider offering an early retirement incentive. So of course, there's a myriad of factors that ultimately determine whether or not it makes sense to offer a plan like this in a given school year. So certainly, one of the biggest drivers of whether or not these plans save money or potentially create losses is the compensation differential between an outgoing or retiring employee and someone that would be backfilling that position. Naturally, we tend to see with certified non-management, there is the largest compensation differential. So typically, that's the group that tends to save the most money for districts as you really just don't have that differential in most cases for a management employee or classified non-management employee. Other factors that we consider are your current natural attrition. We don't want to take credit for retirements that we think would happen regardless of you offering a plan this year. And also future loss and natural attrition, meaning we want to discount future natural attrition, assuming that you'll see a pretty large increase in retirement in this year. So those are also built into our analysis. In addition to that, we factor in your OPEB or your retiree healthcare costs, all of the costs to actually running the program, meaning those 80% of final pay benefit payments as well as the fees for running this program are all netted out of the numbers that I'll show you. So these are true net savings or costs that we'll be looking at. Finally, something that I know is is relevant to the district in this school year are additional savings due to non-replacements. And so I know that there is a certain level of cuts that the team is looking at making to certain employee groups. So while I'm not going to show you during this meeting what all of those potential savings look like, I will at least show you the break-even numbers to give you a sense of what that looks like. Certainly, the more cuts that are made, the higher the savings would go for this plan. In terms of the plan assumptions, again, I know this looks a little bit busy and I I won't spend too much time on this page. But I did want to reiterate that we did meet with cabinet members to discuss the the reality of using these assumptions and making sure that these were conservative and realistic in factoring into our analysis. And so again, we talked about the eligibility requirements for all groups, STIRS or PERS eligibility. We talked about the benefit level. And just to focus you in on replacement salaries, we did a study of where you've been hiring folks in for your certified non-management team. And so on average, that's been right around $93,000. And so we worked with staff to make sure that that was a realistic number to use. So that is factored in as the replacement salary. We also did assume step four replacement for certified management and step three replacement for classified non-management and classified management per the advisement of the cabinet team as well. And then last but not least, as I mentioned, we did fund in all of the relevant healthcare costs for both active employees and retirees and did assume funding over five years. So all of that amounted to the projections that we made. These projections are based on a number of factors. These are based on historically, you know, what would we expect with an 80% of final pay plan? But beyond that, we also look at the demographics of the current group of employees. We look at, you know, the range of age and service for the current employees that are eligible for retirement and also factor in that you didn't early retirement incentive just a couple of years ago. All of these factors go into determining what we would project for this year's early retirement incentive. We are projecting that for your certified non-management group, out of the 49 eligible, 10 teachers we're projecting will enroll in the SERP. We're projecting one certified management employee out of the four eligible. We broke out the classified non-management employees by bargaining group. But you can see here, we're projecting in total 10 employees across those three groups that would enroll in the plan. Oh, and confidential and nonrepresented, two employees. And then last but not least, we're projecting one classified management employee out of the three eligible for a total of 24 employees out of the 133 that would be eligible for this plan. So based on these projections, what we did share with the district is that if there was going to be a full replacement of all employees, we would expect losses in all groups. So again, typically, if the district was then to come back and say, you know, we are planning on fully replacing all of those 24 employees that were projected to leave, this wouldn't make sense to offer this year, obviously, because we are showing losses across the board. However, given the nature of our conversations and that the district is in a cutting mode this year, this could be used as a tool to avoid layoffs. And because of that, because there is a level of non-replaced positions that will be happening, that's what's really going to help make this plan work. So what I did want to show you is that if the district was able to non-replace one eligible employee from every single group, suddenly those losses look much better. And you can see the projected savings over years one, three, and five years are very significant. And so we have shared with the team what those projected savings look like person by person for each employee group. And so the recommendation was to offer this program, knowing that there will be cuts. And ultimately, then, that can certainly yield savings. So this chart here again just shows you the break-even. But I will note, as it says at the bottom, there are certainly additional savings that would be projected based on the number of cuts that the district might ultimately be making based on who actually enrolls in the plan. Um, last but not least, before I open it up for questions, I did want to share the proposed timeline. So ultimately, if the board decides to open up the enrollment window, we would work with the team to get out packets to all eligible employees as soon as possible so that they can process the information and start to think about whether or not this is something that makes sense for them. Our team will hold an orientation meeting, which will provide an overview to all eligible employees of what the plan parameters are, how to fill out their paperwork, answer any immediate questions. And then toward the end of that 30-day period, we will come onsite to the district to actually meet with your employees one-on-one. So this will be an opportunity for employees to ask personal questions, get help filling out their paperwork, and again, have the peace of mind that they're turning in their packet to a PARs employee. March 7 is the date that we have for the enrollment window to close so that we can then again work with the team to make sure that we get that post-analysis information to them with enough time to digest before they bring it back to board on March 14 with a recommendation for whether or not the plan should move forward or should otherwise be canceled. If the board does approve the plan to be moved forward, we will notify participants as soon as we get word from the district. Our team will mail out, you know, either plan no-go letters or we will let them know that the plan is approved. And assuming the plan is approved, we will then also work with your employees to get them set up for their first retirement benefit check. So again, all employees are going to resign from employment at the end of the school year on or before June 30. If the plan moves forward, and they would also expect to receive their first benefit payment August 1 of 2023. So the great news is, is soon after they leave district service, they will start to get paid out with that benefit check. So I know that was a lot of information, so let me pause here and see what questions I can answer.
Um, can we get the screen back?
Yep, let me, whoops.
Thank you.
See how I can exit from this? Stop, share. Okay, there we go.
Thank you so much, Rachel.
Sure.
Um, so before I go to my colleagues, I have one general overall question. And then as I think for for staff, a lot of the success of this is going to be based on the ability not to rehire. And I want to know if that has been vetted out between the departments regarding these numbers and not coming back to the board and saying, you know, we're going to need to fill these positions. So because some of those I'm concerned about not refilling, some of them I'm not. But I want to know how deeply that's been vetted within within our departments.
So one thing I can say is we're in the process now of getting all of the enrollment forms. So getting all of the 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 numbers, what kids are signing up for, looking at the master schedule. We'll do the same thing that we did this year as we've done with previous years. And I'm going to bring those numbers to the board so that there's transparency and how that works and what that looks like. So we plan on doing that. I'll give you a better timeline of that. But it's, we're right in the middle of that right now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Braggy. I'll go to my colleagues first and then I'll finish up my thoughts later. So Mrs. Wells?
I think my question is similar. When you showed the break-even analysis and you were showing if we didn't replace one of each of those in each of the categories, that is, that's, is that based on feedback that you received from the district in terms of future planning? Or you're just using that for a break-even analysis?
Great question. So that was not necessarily based off of the the plans that the district gave us. That was just to show the break-even analysis. But I, you know, in talking to Raphael and the team, I know that there were some thoughts already about certain groups and maybe what that level of replacement looks like. But that was, that was not specifically what that chart was showing.
And my other question is, how does the funding of other positions with COVID affect this in any way, if at all, with COVID dollars that we've received?
Um, I'll jump in. I was just going to say that I think as part of our analysis and right sizing the district, that is definitely going into effect with some of the positions for COVID. We've obviously already noticed because they're temporary and they're holds. Others, definitely this helps, you know, if if enough people take it, it certainly will help us not have to make the reductions. Or if we do, we actually do make the reductions of positions. However, it's not people because those people through attrition, through the, through the retirement incentive would actually be leaving. So it's kind of a nice thing, you know, we we offer this, people go, that 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 relieves us of of funding those positions.
Okay.
And while we still will are considering reductions regardless of this goes or not, it's always nice when, you know, if if people do go, then you you're not really cutting and reducing people, if you will, because because they're resigning or retiring.
Okay, so if there's a position that's being cut, that's a COVID-funded position, that's a net zero impact from a dollar standpoint. But if it's a position that's that's not cut and the COVID funding dollars are going away, then we're, then we are finding dollars to keep that position. Did I say that right?
Yes, I I think I was tracking, yeah, so. Again, all I would say in our overall analysis, we will, it it's always nice when we have generally, general funded positions that where we're overstaffed or we need to right-size, right? And people go, and then we we don't replace those positions. But you're right, if it's a COVID-funded, then right, it's a net because we don't, we, well, it wouldn't tax the general fund, if you will.
Right.
And we'll share those with you so that you know which ones are so that it's it's clear. But most of those COVID positions were the temp positions.
They're not retirement-eligible for this.
Right.
Um, the other thing, then the only last thing I'd say is I think it is important that we make this decision today. And I appreciate that you brought it for the special meetings on behalf of the employees and considering their needs and allowing them to have time to gather the information they need so they can make informed decisions. So I appreciate that we're doing this today.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Mrs. Menchery?
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm just trying to understand, is this a required process? Or is it something that as a district we do as a courtesy? And and by that, I mean, is engaging in PARs and then paying for whatever number of years an employee chooses, is that something we're required to do or are we able to simply let people go? I'm just curious for context.
It it's not a requirement by by any stretch. It's definitely not a requirement for the district. But it is, it's it's an incentive. So that's why, you know, it's an incentive for employees that are on the verge of saying, you know what, hey, I'm looking to retire, but I might not necessarily be where I want to be. They might say, well, with this incentive, that puts me where I want to be. And then with that, you know, if if that position isn't replaced and it's not a COVID position, it's it has an impact, a positive impact for us because what happens is the person that is looking to retire usually is at a much higher salary range. And so if you replace that now with somebody that's in a lower range, you have a, you have a savings there. And so so in the long term, it helps you materialize some savings. It helps the employee to to get where they need to be or make that decision. And it helps the district through attrition. So that's where it becomes an incentive for employees and it also becomes a benefit for the district. It's, you know, and and the thing is, you want to analyze whether that is, you know, for the district, a a positive thing. So as we move forward and we look at the data, the the board will be, you know, shown the data to see if this really, you know, kind of pencils out. And then at that point in time, can make a decision to either continue or or not to continue if it's not something that's going to be a long-term benefit, you know, to the district. So it's just kind of like a a an incentive for the employee. But if it works out well, it's also an incentive for the district because it helps to, you know, materialize the attrition savings.
And we've done in the past, Mrs. Menchery, very, we've done this in the past a few times. One time in the past, we did this and it wasn't a cost benefit to the district. So we went back and had to share it with employees that it didn't meet the goal that we were wanting to meet. This is several years ago. And it is always hard to to tell, like, as Ray, as Rachel said, like, it, you never know, but we we know that we hear sometimes like people will say, since the district does usually offer it every couple of years or like that, oh, I'll just wait. You know, it's it's like, I'll just wait then and still work and maybe they'll offer it next year. And then that's, that's when that gets to be, you know, those are those people at the top end that just sometimes will just keep waiting. And oftentimes, you know, it, you know, that's, they're ready to go. They're just waiting for the incentive. It's been done before. It's a little bit of a gamble. But i- in this case, what I love about this presentation is that the district at the end ultimately has the final decision no matter what happens.
Okay, I hear you. And are you finding, or do you generally find that those folks that are waiting for this opportunity, there's like an overlap and then from a instructional standpoint, we wouldn't mind for them to take the opportunity, like, is there usually like some kind of a harmony between what the staff wanted, what we would want in an ideal world?
I think it's really beneficial to to our staff. I mean, especially the ones that are doing some long-time planning. You know, this is, you know, we we are involved in conversations all the time and I know Matt is as well. You know, and we, people that have been planning for their future, you know, they they've been waiting for this opportunity. Some will decide at the very end that that they won't do it. But it's, it is a benefit for staff members to to do this. It's kind of a win-win.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, good point, Dr. Braggy. I was just going to say it's a win-win. Having gone through and Judy, Mrs. Menchery, going through the layoff process is a very lengthy, costly process as well that that we have to factor in that with, you know, because obviously the unions are, you know, it's a win for them. So that process certainly is easing and far less burdensome when we have people just going into retirement or resigning. It's just a much better, better process and great, great for them. And again, if we 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 realize big savings in that, you know, it's a win-win. And even if it's where there are always some replacements due to just the nature of the positions, we're getting, you know, a lot of times you're getting new. We're getting, you know, a lot of times you're getting new hires and people who are. New to the profession, excited and eager and not saying that folks who are not experienced or not, but sometimes it's like. They re- it's time.
Energy is good. Thank you.
I I mean, I would just add, it seems to me, from a financial standpoint, it can be a win win, but the risk is always, of course, you can lose employees that you'd love to have stay longer, but. Because financially, it makes it makes more sense from that for them from a financial planning standpoint. There's the risk that you may lose some employees that, you know, you know, ideally, you would have really loved for them to stay longer. On that standpoint, but from a financial standpoint, it clearly can be a win win.
And that's and that's absolutely happened. I've seen that happen. So you're you're right, Mary. Rochelle?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and I want to tell you, Rachel, it was a wonderful explanation and a great presentation. I really. Thought you did a great job with it, and I've been around to hear a few of them. I have some questions, and I, maybe you can and can't answer them. If a person, a teacher. Here's about the plan, decides they want to do it, and they is they submit that they will do it, and we go ahead and. Do all of our planning and and presentation and get it ready, and we know that, say, ten teachers or twelve teachers. Have decided to do it, and then at the last minute, a couple of them decide not to do it, and we've done all this planning. Can that teacher back out at that point? And at at that point, can that upset our plans to offer the plan?
Good, good question. So what we communicate to employees both in the orientation, as well as in all of their packets that they would be receiving, is that. As of five PM on the planned deadline date, which is March seventh. If employee has enrolled and the plan moves forward, they are locked into participation, so they cannot withdraw, because. To your point, if we allowed for withdrawals after the fact, that could unfortunately derail the plan savings, and so. They're locked in if the plan moves forward, but as I said, of course, if the board decides not to move forward with the plan, they would have the decision as to whether or not they want to resign at that point.
We offered this, I don't, you may not be able to answer this question, but a couple of years ago when we offered this, and I. I've been around a few, how you, do you have any idea how we stood and how much money we saved? Is there any? Figures on that from?
You know what? I could try to pull it up here. So I was, I was around for that last one too, in the twenty 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 one year.
Yeah, one second, I'll be right back.
Okay, no problem. Let me, let me see if I can find what we were projecting is the savings. Sorry, trying to quickly thumb through this. There you are. Okay, yes, so based on the anticipated non replacements that the district furnished us with last time. We had projected savings of about two point four million over five years for the last plan.
And then you don't know how we did on that. We don't know how we did on that, do we?
So, you know, I I can't, I can't say if if the districts followed through on the non replacements that we had projected, but. There was a projected eight positions that were not replaced in the last SERP, and that yielded savings over two point four million approximately, if that did end up happening.
Well, great, okay, and then. We are. One of the things that I do point out is that as teachers of certain positions are so much more difficult to get. As they come into the district and we do replace them, I remember when you first had this, the teachers would come in with two or three years experience. Even though they may have had five or six or something, we now give more years of experience to attract the teachers. So sometimes the savings per teacher is sometimes not as great as it used to be many years ago. Unfortunately, that that's another consideration. And. I would love to point out, and I think it was also said that I don't want that. This, you take the chance that you also lose some very, very fine teachers. Who, if that wasn't offered, would 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 stay on, but all of a sudden, this looks very inviting with eighty percent of the money and so on, so. I I I do. I am actually remembering my own situation many years ago, so.
I'm sorry, Ms. Marcus, I I just didn't want to mention, you know, with what you said. In regards to just a higher level of of hiring, so Rachel and her team, and Rachel, I don't know if you want to just explain this, but you you know. You guys actually looked at our hiring trends for the past few years, and they. Based their data on our recent hiring trends. You wanna, so so we're gonna, the data, the assumptions of savings are based on our. On on the higher amounts that you're speaking of. So, yeah.
That's correct. Yep, we did a new hire study to see where you had been hiring in new teachers at, and we factored that into. Our assumptions, so that we were using realistic assumptions.
Well, I just want to say that I am totally in favor of going forward with this. You have my total approval, and I.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus, we'll get to the vote. We'll get to the vote.
I understand, I just want you to know.
Dr. Stern?
So as we all know, a lot, you know, since the pandemic, there's been an exodus in the in this industry. Mainly of educators, but teachers are leaving in droves. There's been a lot of unhappiness and also in in certificated. Management. You guys identified that there's like a hundred and thirty three eligible. And you're guessing that twenty four might want to do this. Given the general feeling, the culture these days, what what would the, what would be the? What would happen if far more than twenty four? Out of the one thirty three elected to do this? How would that impact us? So supposing, let's say. Conservatively, out of the one thirty three, there's really fifty. Who come forward. Would that greatly shift things? And would that be something that would be detrimental to us in terms of financial?
Yeah, great question. And so what we always caveat to both, and you know, the the employees as well as the board is that. Ultimately, this is the plan that has to meet the district's fiscal and operational objectives. So. In your example, if we were to get twice as many people as we projected, of course, that might throw things out of whack, especially given, you know, if you have. All of your management employees take it, or all of your classified non-management employees take it, those are the groups that tend to not save as much money as as the. Certified non-management do, so those factors certainly could impact the outcome. But what I will say is that, you know, again, we've we've been doing these plans since nineteen eighty four, and so. We try to err on the side of being pretty conservative in our projections and using. Past modeling of what similar plans look like based on your demographics and level of benefit, so we typically don't see. Swings that far off from our projections, maybe a couple people here or there. But of course, if something dramatic happened and there was an event that created a a a far larger number of enrollments than we anticipated. We would work with the district to make sure that still did meet those objectives, and and again, you do have complete, the complete ability to cancel the plan if for some reason it no longer met those objectives.
The other thing too is that I think it's by. Next school year, following one, right, is when we start to open up to a huge amount of four year olds, right? Isn't that right, Michael? It's not next year, but the following school year, which would be twenty five, twenty six. Right, so. Do we? I mean, generally speaking, the teachers and the the type of staff that deal with the littles tend to be younger, right, so less expensive. But is that, I guess I'm throwing this out to my colleagues, is that something we should think about that we're really going to need? Experienced folks to deal with the large, you know, incoming of very young students. That is going to be a change, you know, with the universal TK program, so is, you know, would that, is that something to consider?
Well, we have, we've already opened, so we we we're already slotting people in, and we've already, we're not doing the phase in, because we're putting. We're going the full extent of all four, four year olds, so it's like, we have that built in, and we have people that are credentialed in that area. So I don't see that the TK program being any issue at all for that.
I would agree, and and Ms. Dr. Stern, we've also consequently. Have been training through Dustin Seaman, have we've trained. A ton of our teachers are going through that program to be eligible to teach the TK, so we have good, really good flexibility. From a credentialing. Aspect where we could, you know, slot some of those people into those lower, lower TK positions and then just be recruiting for. Elementary positions. So the question you asked earlier, what, if we had tons of people? We'd be busy in HR hiring, you know, like, we'd be recruiting, and the nice thing about it being early and knowing now is. We start that recruiting process immediately, and you know, Beverly Hills is an attractive place, so. In art, in my time of being here, our recruitment efforts have been aided, you know, certainly assisted in it being Beverly Hills and 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 our pay scales.
And and Dr. Stern, just to reiterate too, what was was Sanders was saying earlier. In the resolution for the next, you'll see that it it does say that. If the fiscal and operational objectives of the district are not met, that you can always still. Withdraw the incentive, and then at that point, the resignations would be rescinded. So there is that, there is that kind of like safety net for us in the sense of. When we look at it, you know, if it's too many people, there there's always the. The the district can always go back to that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Wells.
Going back to the last time that we did this, and we had the eight positions that were. Could not be rehired. And Matt, can you just remind me, did did we end up replacing those positions, or did we keep them? At that status?
Is Matt frozen?
He is frozen.
I'm not sure what that, what that is offhand. We'd have to go, we'd have to go back and look at.
When Rachel was saying that the two point four million put, and based on the fact that we had eight positions that would not be replaced. I'm just curious if we, if we maintain that the those positions not being replaced are eventually we end. But I just can't remember what we ended up doing with those eight positions, if you could remind me.
Sorry, my connection was frozen. I think I'm back. We, I don't have the exact folks in front of me, but we did, we, I know we reduced. A a number of those positions and and recognize those savings. I think we're in a really good part of. While well intentioned, we, at that time, we were, we believed we would be coming out of COVID and could then. Just completely reduce, however. We did, weren't in a position where we actually could. Reduce as many as we'd like to, because COVID, as you know. Dragged on, and we had, we had to keep the ILC open. The unique thing about now is. We are not, we are disbanding much of the ILC as as we know it. We have reduced. Last year, but we're also reducing more this year, so these are positions that we know and are confident. Barring another round of COVID. You know, the nice thing there is we had COVID funds to fund those positions, so we kept them in temporary status, so. Those positions will, we feel confidently will fully come off the books, and. So I I feel very strongly in the timing of this, a- again now.
That was my recollection, and I thought it was a good decision that we, I mean, we we had the ability to keep those teachers on so that we could have. Some more support for the students for COVID. Recovery, if I if I recall correctly.
That's correct.
Can I ask two questions, please? The first is, you know, let's say X number of teachers agree, and it matches up with our ideal exactly. What's going to be the impact on our kids? Like, for example, do we have some statistics, like right now, on average, K through three, the classroom headcount is. Twenty three, and then it'll jump to twenty five? What, so what are our children going to feel as a result of these? Of this being implemented?
We obviously. Our biggest concern is impact to students, right? So our our ratios are. Low currently, and we actually have maximums that we can't go over. So at those lower levels, but we we're not really up against them at this point in time now. We will look at positions that to cut away from actual classroom positions. And reducing there. So we always will think about impact, and I, we we don't see from our analysis, again, it 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 all depends on. People and certain, certain people who will take it, but we feel confidently there's positions out there that we would. Would not replace, and. Very little impact on kids, and I will say Dustin Seaman's. Shop and and Laura Chis- Laura Collins Williams are are already. Considering, you know, what it would look like with reductions, so we're making contingency plans with principals. They met last week, as Dr. B. alluded to, with staffing and just taking all things considered, knowing just. Who may take it and who's going, so we're making full contingency plans a- around all of our staffing at this point in time.
And I just, I want to address that just from having gone through this drill for several years, and I think this is the fourth or fifth. SERP that we've offered, at least in the last decade or so. The, the impact on the students is not really something. That we feel from this. Other things have impacted students, but not this. We, we have been overstaffed a lot, and with our population declining. It kind of follows along with that, so that there really is very little impact. At all, even noticeable. Maybe you had twenty kids, you get twenty one kids. That, it's, it's really an unnoticed impact. It's always the classes, whether we do a SERP or not, it's the classes that have. For some reason, have fifteen kids in it, for whatever reason, although staff has been doing a better job of making sure that doesn't happen. So if a class has fifteen, and the next year, the that that student winds up in a class, maybe they're in third grade, then they wind up in fourth grade, and there's twenty six kids in the class. Right? Then they say, oh, my God, then the sky is falling, but they don't understand that that's, it was always going to happen that way, SERP or no SERP, you know, that's. It's not because of the SERP. So I just wanted to add that just from experience about regarding your question. Go ahead with your other one.
Thank you. And then once, at what point do we make the calculation for the grandparent permit? So, you know, we do the one fourth of available spots and so on. So is that like a post SERP calculation? And maybe it should be.
So. It is, so I know that Laura had sent to us, you know, the timeline for that is later. So, and I'm sorry, I'm in a room with automatic lights, so sorry.
I wondered what happened there.
Throw this. There we go. So. The, it it is, it's done afterwards. It it really, that wouldn't impact our staffing at all, because it. You know, because this is the, this is the, this is the group that we have, and we still keep those buffers in place, like the, all of the guidelines about having. At least ten spots available for move ins, so it really, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't change that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My only other question was, when the. Teachers or the staff member submits. Their submission is not revocable, right? We can revoke the offer, but they can't revoke. Once they've committed. Is that still the case?
That is correct. As of five PM on the deadline, they can technically submit earlier than that, withdraw before the deadline, but once that deadline hits there, they're locked in, assuming the plan moves forward.
Okay, understood. All right, so.
Mr. Margot, just so you know, that.
I know, I know, that's why I wanted to see if it was still the case. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agreement?
I'll make a motion for approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move to the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, the number, I don't have it on my.
Twenty two, twenty three dash thirteen.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern, made by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Dr. Stern. Any conversation or questions on the resolution? Terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. You have yourself a SERP. So go, go to it, go forth. Last, I, does anybody have anything else on this item before I leave it?
Mr. Margot, I would, I I would just say that we, just for the board's knowledge, we are, you saw this tight timeline, there's going to be, we are. Working with Mrs. Sanders, Sanders has been phenomenal, phenomenal. I've worked with her on a few now, and they're great at pars. And we have information sessions kind of ready to go, waiting on this, and we're going to be doing tons of work to make sure that. All of our employees are well aware and well versed and educated, and. We feel extremely confident in in pars to 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 collaborate with us.
All, all hundred and thirty three, correct?
I really appreciate you moving on this quickly and getting the information out to all the employees. So that they're informed, like I said previously. So thank you very much for bringing it to us and and moving quickly.
Yeah, and it's also, it's just very attractive, and I I love that our district is offering this because it's just great, and I I think that one of the. The key ways to attract and keep. Yeah. And it's also, it's just very attractive. And I, I love that our district is offering this because it's just great. And I, I think that one of the, the key ways to attract and keep. Um, talented people is to have things like this that are really attractive that other districts perhaps don't do. So I do feel fortunate and I'm glad. Uh, thank you, uh, Raphael and also, uh, Ms. Sanders for, um, bringing it to our attention.
First, thank you.
Um, thank you very much, everybody. Um, Dr. Bury, any, or Ms. Kraus-Hauer, any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, fabulous. Then with that, um, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Have a wonderful week and I will see you on Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone. Night.